Welcome and thank you to everyone here in the audience and on our YouTube livestream for being here today. I call this meeting of the Montgomery County School Board to order at 7:00 PM on February 23, 2021. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is the adoption of the agenda. The stated reason for tonight's call session was to vote on Phase 3 Level 3 proposal. Our agenda also includes budgetary items that were held over from the February 16th meeting. In addition, Mr. Tribaka has asked for the first reading of Policy 1-6.8 for virtual public address to be added to the agenda. Because this is a special session, agenda items not included in the reason for the called meeting should be added to the agenda on unanimous agreement by all board members. Does anyone have anything they want to discuss about the additions to the agenda before we vote on each item?
I'm sorry, Chair. My board docs does not seem to be up to date. Can you tell me how many items are under the business meeting?
There are four.
It should be under the business meeting number two.
Okay, I see.
Good? Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Our first additional item, agenda item, is the school board funding request for 2021. Mr. Drake, will you please call roll to determine if there is unanimous agreement?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Were we going to discuss that first or was that...?
We don't discuss each one individually.
Okay, sorry. So I just wanted to make one statement then, back to your prior point. I want to explain my vote. I do think that this... I've had some problems with this call meeting to begin with. I think that when I brought up the possibility of adding Policy 1-6.8 and also public comment, I think it was not correct that those could not be considered. And there were several things brought up at the last meeting that we would do at the next meeting, including these funding requests and Policy 1-6.8. I made it clear to the Chair and to Mr. Drake also that I view this as an all or nothing vote. So without seeing Policy 1-6.8 on the agenda, I'm going to vote no because I think we need to stick with our bylaws and our policies.
Okay, well, we will vote on each item separately. Our first additional item, agenda item, is the school nutrition funding request for 2021. Mr. Drake, will you again call roll for a unanimous agreement?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
No.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Ms. Cass?
No.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Phil?
Yes.
Our third additional item is the request for categorical appropriation of funds. Mr. Drake, again, will you please call the roll to...
Do we have discussion?
The discussion was asked for before we did any of the forebears.
But if we're doing individual votes, then aren't there discussions allowed with each individual item? There should be.
The information on the special called meeting and how the agenda occurs is discussion before unanimous agreement. We're doing a vote because with the movements in the room, we've had a couple of people who've moved around. And also with keeping on the masks, it's getting hard for me to place people when we do an all or nothing unanimous consent. But then the discussion would happen again at the adoption of...
Welcome and thank you to everyone here in the audience and on our YouTube livestream for being here today. I call this meeting of the Montgomery County School Board to order at 7:00 PM on February 23rd, 2021. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is the adoption of the agenda. The stated reason for tonight's call session was to vote on Phase 3 Level 3 proposal. Our agenda also includes budgetary items that were held over from the February 16th meeting. In addition, Mr. Travaca has asked for the first reading of Policy 1-6.8 for virtual public address to be added to the agenda. Because this is a special session, agenda items not included in the reason for the called meeting should be added to the agenda on unanimous agreement by all board members. Does anyone have anything they want to discuss about the additions to the agenda before we vote on each item?
I'm sorry Chair, my board docs does not seem to be up to date. Can you tell me what the, how many items are under the business meeting?
There are four. It should be under the business meeting number two?
Okay, I see.
Good, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Our first additional item, agenda item, is the school board funding request for 2020-2021. Ms. Drake, will you please recall roll to determine if there is unanimous agreement?
I'm sorry, were we going to discuss that first or was that?
We don't discuss each one individually.
Okay, sorry, so I just wanted to make one statement then, back to your prior point. I want to explain my vote. I do think that this, I've had some problems with this call meeting to begin with. I think that when I brought up the possibility of adding Policy 1-6.8 and also public comment, I think it was not correct that those could not be considered. And there were several things brought up at the last meeting that we would do at the next meeting, including these funding requests and Policy 1-6.8. I made it clear to the Chair and to Ms. Drake also that I view this as an all or nothing vote. So without seeing Policy 1-6.8 on the agenda, I'm going to vote no because I think we need to stick with our bylaws and our policies, so.
Okay, well, we will vote on each item separately. Our first additional item, agenda item in this is the school board funding request for 2020-2021. Ms. Drake, will you please call a roll to determine if there is unanimous agreement?
Ms. Bond? Mr. Travaca? Ms. Franklin? Ms. Cass? Ms. Khan? Ms. Parton? Ms. Graham? If fail? Ms. Cass, I just want to make sure your mic is.
Our second additional agenda item is the school nutrition funding request for 2020-2021. Ms. Drake, will you again call roll for unanimous agreement?
Yes ma'am. Ms. Bond? Mr. Travaca? Ms. Franklin? Ms. Cass? Ms. Khan? Ms. Parton? Ms. Graham? Motion fail?
Our third additional item is the request for categorical appropriation of funds. Ms. Drake, again, will you please call the roll to?
Do we have discussion?
The discussion was asked for before we did any of the four votes.
But if we're doing individual votes, then is there discussion allowed with each individual item? There should be.
The information on the special call meeting and how the agenda occurs is discussion before unanimous agreement. We're doing a vote because with the movements in the room, we've had a couple of people who've moved around and also with keeping on the masks, it's getting hard for me to place people when we do an all or nothing unanimous consent. But then the discussion would happen again at the adoption of the agenda. This was on the advice of the attorney.
I'll be honest, I'm not sure exactly what that means. If we're taking individual votes, then there should be discussion on each item.
The discussion was asked for at the beginning?
Quite frankly, I wasn't clear what you were asking for. Because, you know, it's just a call meeting, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. Now that you want to add stuff, let's do this. And as Mr. Travaca stated, he wanted to add things to the agenda, but those were not allowed. So I'm not clear exactly how I'm voting on what.
So we're getting more consensus on whether these items are going to be on the agenda since Mr. Travaca raised a concern about what was being on here other than the special call meeting.
Okay, well consensus is not taken by votes.
Unanimous agreement is taken by votes, yes ma'am.
Okay, so if we're voting on each item, then shouldn't there be discussion allowed with each item?
The discussion was requested before all four items.
Okay, let's go.
Our third additional agenda item is the request for categorical appropriation of funds. Ms. Drake, would you again call roll to determine if there is unanimous agreement?
Ms. Bond? Mr. Travaca? Ms. Franklin? Ms. Cass? Ms. Khan? Ms. Parton? Ms. Graham?
Our fourth additional agenda item is adding Policy 1-6.8 to the agenda for first reading. Ms. Drake, will you again call roll to determine if there is unanimous agreement?
Ms. Bond? Mr. Travaca? Ms. Franklin? Ms. Cass? Ms. Khan? Ms. Parton? Ms. Graham? Motion fail?
Thank you board members. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as updated given our previous motions?
And that item, what is the items on the agenda that we're voting on?
The items on the agenda will now be just phase and level change proposal. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as updated given our previous motions? Second, thank you. Ms. Drake, will you please call roll?
Do you want to have discussion on that?
No, because this is what we agreed on.
I'm going to make a comment on this if I may. Can we have discussion on this?
On agenda, are we?
Yeah, adoption of the agenda, right? We have a motion and a second. I'm going to vote no because I know many of us work, I think many people work. We called this meeting to basically have the last discussion and vote. And at, what was it, 2:45 this afternoon, a 57-page presentation was added to the agenda. And, you know, quite frankly, I just, I have a problem with that. When we have something like this that's being added, we don't have time to, I have not even had time to look through it, much less digest what it's saying, so I'm voting no.
Okay, Ms. Drake, would you please call roll?
Yes. Ms. Bond? Mr. Travaca? Ms. Franklin? Ms. Cass? Ms. Khan? Ms. Parton? Ms. Graham? Motion carries?
I will give Ms. Drake a few moments to update the agenda and board doc system. Please let me know when you're ready.
Yes ma'am, thank you. Yes, I have also received about 15 text messages in the last few minutes saying that there's an echo. I promise that our AV team is working on it. Thank you for everyone who is so communicative about the echo. There we go. All right, board members, so what you'll see on the screen as the adjustment to the agenda is those items have been moved to March 2nd. That change just allows me to move those items easily once this meeting is over. I hope that that is okay with you as a method. It means I don't lose all that work that was put in there.
Ms. Drake, I'm sorry, but I don't see the Policy 1-6.8.
Correct, because the. Dick Wicket with the special called meeting and the rules that are associated with the special called meeting. So we have the rules with the special called meeting, but then we also have FOIA requirements when it comes to calling a meeting, whether it's special or not, there are certain rules we have to meet, right? And so the items that you, well, they were on the screen, scroll down, sorry about that. Were on the screen, were part of the notification, right? They were on the agenda when you received it. We voted on adding Policy 1.1-6.8 to the agenda. There was no previous notification, but because this is a special session, that agenda item could have been added with unanimous agreement by the board. I attempted to explain that in an email that I sent to you about how all of that would work. And it's because, again, this was explained in detail by Ms. Chuff and Mr. King about the, there's just a few weird rules that are different than we normally have when we talk about a special session and that unanimous agreement for anything other than their reason for the called meeting and then the notification parameters of we had already notified on an agenda and adding agenda items. But the item could have been added. And as American, we already have it on the agenda for March 2nd, right? So does that help answer?
So it could have been added if we unanimously said okay to the other three?
No ma'am, it's independent. If that had been unanimous, it would have been added.
Thank you, thank you for that explanation. So board members, as we move into our agenda, I want to make you aware of the work that I will be doing as Chair to facilitate our discussions moving forward. As you know, we have norms and protocols in place to guide our meetings. We also have Robert's Rules of Orders as required by our school board policy. During our many sessions with VSBA, board members expressed a desire for greater guidance and discussions. Starting tonight, I will go around the room during this discussion of our agenda items. I will call on board members in alphabetical order by last name, just as we do with roll call, with the person who made the motion receiving the first opportunity to speak. Additionally, I will follow Robert's Rules of Orders to ensure each board member has a chance to speak per our norms and protocols, procedures. Every board member will be given the opportunity to speak once before any board member can speak a second time. Per Robert's Rules of Order and the American Bar Association, each board member gets 10 minutes to speak on an agenda item and may speak twice about each agenda item. I've left a copy of this section of Robert's Rules at your place for your reference. Ms. Drake, will you utilize the public address timer to show a 10-minute timer when each board member begins their discussion? Thank you.
Okay, so point of order. So the 10-minute limit, that can be adjusted as we as a board want to adjust that.
Absolutely, it can. 10 minutes is the default for Robert's Rules. Some boards set, you know, five minutes, six minutes. In order to set that higher, it would be adding it to our policy.
No, I think if you're going to now all of a sudden say, this is what we're going to do as far as follow Robert's Rules of Orders order with time limits, then that should have been something that the board discussed before it was enacted so that we could say, we think 10 minutes is too long, 10 minutes is too short.
And we can certainly do that in the future.
So again, the Chair is just using her power to say this is how we're going to operate without discussion from the board.
It is not my power, it is in the Robert's Rules of Order. Which as a policy, we follow.
Which again.
And we have never, we have not followed it before.
And we will be adding more things.
So now we have one of the most important decisions that we're going to make as a board, probably for, I don't know how long. And this is the night, this special meeting that you went out of your way to call, which wasn't even supposed to happen. And now you are making sure that you limit any discussion that gets had. You made sure that we couldn't have public forum. Now you're limiting the board's discussion time. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, but that does feel like you are trying to control our voice.
And that is not the case. First of all, I am not limiting anyone's times. It's a procedure that we should be following all the time. And the reason for doing that is exactly what we voiced to the VSBA as concerns about our desire for less time for each person in the rambling or circling. And that's what we talked to them about.
We also talked to them about a lot of other issues about how we interact as a board. And I think that this definitely would be part of our problem.
Well, we can't accomplish everything at one time, I realize that. So we needed to start somewhere. And in order to make sure that everyone gets a fair voice and that that voice can be heard and we stay on the discussion for the motion, we're going to use the Robert's Rules of Order, which is in our policy to follow.
I think, Madam Chair, this is a spectacularly bad time to be doing this. And I would also add that we were also informed about this at what, about 5 o'clock this evening?
4:00 something.
Yeah, I mean, an hour or two before the meeting. We have a certain way that we have operated and I think we've all been, I respect all my fellow board members and I think we've all, we will hear each other out on this. And yes, sometimes our meetings go a little bit long because of that and that's okay. And we can choose to change that at some point, okay? But doing it an hour or two before a meeting like this serves the purpose of, whether it's the intention or not, it serves the purpose of squashing dialogue on this. I, you know, I and hopefully many of you come to this meeting prepared with things to say and the way that we're going to do this. To basically change the rules of how we're going to operate all at once is, I think, highly unfair and unfortunate.
Yeah, it feels almost unethical. And I realize that a lot of us, we have our disagreements and I think we all have sort of our stand on this. There's one issue we're talking tonight about. It's one important issue. And I think to limit our time, it doesn't feel right. And even if, no matter what side of this you fall on, to having your voice stymie doesn't feel as though we are really practicing democracy.
Would someone like to make a motion on a time that we could set that would be fair to everyone?
It's not just time, it's also the back and forth, I mean, in a discussion. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I understand this, everybody talks twice for a limit of 10 minutes. I may only want to say two minutes worth of stuff. And then I might want to say another two minutes later and then yet another two minutes later. That's the way the back and forth of the discussion works, so.
And Robert's Rules does not lend itself to that?
We don't have to follow Robert's Rules. So can we make a motion that we continue to operate the way that we've operated our other meetings for this meeting? I'm fine with a 10-minute limit if that's what's really important. But I think it's important that we have some back and forth on this.
I don't see, think we should make a, the other night we each talked for a fair amount of time and then we said what we had to say and we were done. And I think to put a time limit on our thoughts, important thoughts. I mean, I'm going to have, I'm going to listen to a very long presentation that I didn't even know about. Yet I'm not, I'm going to be limited to amount of time. So I motion that we do things the way we've done in the past, that we speak when we respectfully speak. We don't interrupt each other. We don't talk over each other, we ask for the floor, but we speak when we would like to make a comment and that we not have a time limit. That's a long motion, sorry.
And I would say if this is something that you would like to discuss as a Chair as how we might implement it, then that should be put on the agenda for us to have that discussion and not just, this is what we're going to do, especially at this point.
Our policy states that we must, that we should be following Robert's Rules of Order.
So we've been breaking policy for at least the 21 years that I've been sitting here. And now all of a sudden, we're going to, we're going to do this, which I agree, is trying to limit discussion on this issue with board members.
Again, during our VSBA training, we all mentioned.
So during VSBA training, from what I recall, the issue was not so much as how long folks were speaking, is that everybody wasn't getting an opportunity to speak.
And that is part of it.
And at the last board meeting, you went around the table and everyone was getting opportunities to speak. And we did not have to, you know, all of a sudden pop up with this piece of Robert's Rules of Orders. And if anyone really understands Robert's Rules of Orders order, it also says, this should not be a tool that is used to, for use of a better word, manipulate or control discussion around issues. That's what Robert Rules of Order says. Don't just use it for, you know, your own purposes.
It's not being used to manipulate or control?
Do not agree that this is what we should be doing tonight, again, sprung on us at the last minute where there's no discussion as a board as to how we want to use that.
Again, it was.
Can be adjusted.
It was meant to give everyone time to talk fairly. And it was, it was a step into working towards the challenges that we've been facing as a board and that we've mentioned during our training sessions.
Okay, so, great. But let's put that on the agenda to have that discussion at another time and not now. This is not the time to all of a sudden, this is how we're going to operate.
The only thing that we could put on the agenda to discuss is the time limit.
Oh, I'm not saying tonight. It should not be used tonight. This should be an agenda item for a future meeting for us to have this discussion, how we're going to use this.
Okay, well, we don't discuss how to use Robert's Rules of Order. What we do discuss is the limitations. So we can, we can have an adjustment to our policy and change the time limit, much like the Board of Supervisors has done. So we can do that, but we can't adjust our policy to say that we only choose to use parts of Robert Rules of Order when we want to.
That's not what I said. I said to have it on the agenda so we discuss how we use this, the time limits that you're trying to use tonight, how we want, what we want those times, that time to look like.
Absolutely, we can do that. Absolutely, we can do that. So in order to change the amount of time that Robert's Rules of Order gives us, we would need a two-thirds vote, is that correct, Ms. Drake?
Extending or limiting debate time requires a two-thirds vote. And as a reminder, there is a motion and a second on the table.
I just want to make one comment. I agree that we have to follow some sort of orders because I think we've been acting so dysfunctional so long for now. because I think we've been acting so dysfunctional so long for now. And, uh, but I think I am really not sure if today is the day to do, to start functioning orderly. Uh, now that it is on the agenda item, we have, is this important decision, and we have the whole evening. I think we have to let our, you know, let the discussion going and hear each other respectfully and, and continue for the evening. But I totally agree what needs to be done in terms of following Robert's Rule of Orders into our daily conversations in the meetings so that we can go on and on or repeat ourselves over and over.
Just, go ahead, Jamie.
I'm just going to make a comment. I, I agree. Although, one of the concerns with mine is with the norms and protocols is the late meetings. It's not so much how much we spend time. It's the fact that when we get in, I understand every issue we decide about for staff and teachers and students is important, every single one of them. But when it starts getting midnight and people are watching, and they have to go to work in the morning, and our staff has to be at work in the morning. I don't think we need to continue on just voting, oh, well, this is important, we need to keep on, when you're not thinking clearly. That was the discussion that was at the meeting about norms and protocols. That's what it was about. It was about how long the meetings were going, and it was getting ridiculous. So I don't think tonight's the night to inter- and I do appreciate what Marty is trying to say because it has gotten out of control. And every decision, like I said, is, is important, every single one of them. So maybe not tonight, but we do definitely need to make some decisions on the fact of, oh, well, let's not vote at 11:30 to continue the meeting. Let's vote to have another meeting to finish it, when it's at a decent hour for people that have to maintain a day for the next day. Students that are watching, you know, teachers, parents, anybody, workpeople, me, y'all.
Okay, thank you for your feedback. Then we will continue with the motion that is, I believe, on the floor.
Do you mind reminding the motion, Ms. Drake?
Yes, please. Thank you.
I'm hoping I captured Ms. Cass's words appropriately.
I know I said way more than that.
Speak when we would like to make a comment and not have a time limit.
This evening. I guess this evening, is that what we wanted to add on there? Just there, until we have an opportunity to, I guess for tonight, correct?
For the duration of the meeting. I'm adding that in right now. Mr. Tribaka, do you agree with that change for your second?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So could you read that motion?
Yeah, absolutely. Speak, did it come up? Oh, it didn't, it didn't pop up up there. I don't know how to make that happen. I'm sorry. Speak when we would like to make a comment and not have a time limit for the duration of the meeting, this meeting.
Hey, we have a motion, I mean, we have a second, so we.
Mr. Tribaka agreed to the changes for the second, yes, ma'am.
So we can proceed with a vote? All those in favor?
If you're ready.
Can I make a comment?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I don't mean to drag this out, but as Ms. Bond has pointed out, we have a, an important vote tonight. We have teachers, we have students, we have staff, we have administration here. I don't mind letting everyone speak and say their, their piece. I'm good with that. But we don't need to be making these people wait till 12 o'clock before we take a vote. So I think we need to be respectful of everyone's time and say what we need to say in a limited, pretty much common sense use of our time and make use of our time wisely. And keep in mind, we've got people that are waiting for a vote, and these people do have to get up the next day. And I don't think that we're being very respectful if we're dragging this meeting out till 12 and 1 o'clock in the morning before we do that. That was all I wanted to say.
Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Great. Dr. Meyer, I believe the presentation.
Well, actually, yes. Ms. Drake will be coming up to go over the data collected from the survey. And I want to say this too, the presentation that was just put on there, that was something from this morning that the, usually once every week or two, we meet, all the superintendents in the state meet with the state superintendent. And we did that via Zoom this morning. He has various guests. This morning's guest, they were from the Virginia Charter of the American Academy of Pediatrics. And they did a very good presentation on returning to school. And I'm, this, this is their presentation, not ours, but I thought it would be a good source for you all to look at. And, but they gave all the superintendents in the state very good information on how to safely return to school. That's all that is, as a reference.
I appreciate Dr. Meyer giving me a little bit of time. I'm going to hook up my computer. You'll see why in just a few minutes. As that's all getting into play, we're going to make sure everything moves the way it needs to. I will mute it just in case. I do want to give a shout out to Nurse Patty from Blacksburg High School, who while I was at Kroger today, recognized me by my voice. We're good. Great, thank you so much. So good, good evening, board members. Again, thank you for having me here tonight to talk to you about our questionnaire data. We had, we have two ways of collecting the data for this questionnaire. I'm going to walk you through some steps before I give you the survey and allow you to look at the data, although I, I know you've already seen it. But we do want the members of the community who are logging in to watch to be able to see that. So we collected data via Survey Monkey and via Google Forms. Survey Monkey was designed for parents, teachers, community members, other M C P S staff. We used Google Forms as part of our inclement weather check-in process for students. But what we, what we did in the Survey Monkey was students, we had student as an option. You could say I'm a student. And when that happened, they were directed to a screen that said, please check your Google Classroom. We collect student responses via Google Classroom. That, that one aspect of how we chose to roll out this survey has created some complications and some confusion about participant numbers and data numbers. I'd like to just show you the process that I went through and when that process happened. So. First, we have our data slide. I'm not going to blow it up. I'm promised I'm going to roll through all the slides here in a little, in a minute. But I'm going to be switching to some different things. So you can see that this slide asks, what is your role with M C P S? And please select the one category that best describes your role. So I'm going to hop on over to Survey Monkey. And this is where we pull the data. I use a program called Infogram that makes the charts just work a little bit easier. Survey Monkey can be really hard if you're trying to make sure you can read all of the lines on the page. And so you can see that students are in this list. But because students could never complete the last question, they never got there. They were redirected and said, please go to Google Classroom. That's where your survey is, right? Please check your inclement weather page. Please, please go to Google Classroom. So we pulled those student numbers out. So when we look at this slide, we see teachers, we see other staff, we see two, two parents, right, parents of in, students who are in person, parents of students who are remote, and then we see community members. Those numbers never changed. But the students were pulled out because as we look at the Survey Monkey data, the students aren't represented. The students get represented, and forgive me, it's going to be a quick scroll. Dr. Meyer hates when I do a quick scroll. It drives him nuts. We're going to talk about the student data as well, right? We're going to present that to you separately. And so I wanted to explain that. Now, when we go to the next demographic slide, which community do you represent? Students were able to complete this question. They weren't, there, there's a logic stream, right? That's the technical term. They weren't sent off in the logic stream until after this question. When I initially posted the slide data, I had not removed the students from this slide. And so all the numbers looked really wonky because some were really low and some were really high, and that didn't make sense. And so the information you have now represents the same group that is on the previous slide. Teachers, other staff, parents of in person, of students who are in person, parents of students who are remote, and community members. Now, we do account for the students. I'm going to talk about that in just a minute as well. But I wanted you to know why you saw so many versions of this data come to you. And you can see, we also made a note on the slide. Again, in an effort to be transparent to anyone who might be looking at this, what exactly happened, quite simply, we forgot to take the students out of this piece. Why? Because they could never answer the final question. They are counted in a different way. They never got to that third question to answer it. And we did want students to know they could respond, right? So we've had some people question, well, why did you have the ability for a student to say I'm a student? We wanted to point them in the right direction. Redundancy is great in a system like this. And we wanted them to know they could go to Google Classroom and they could get the information that they wanted to access. So now we're going to go to slide 15. So we talked a little bit about Survey Monkey. You've seen what that looks like and how those numbers work. This is the all-student slide. When I first released the all-student slide, it gave a number of 9,347. I'm going to show you. This is where I pulled that number from. Over here on the right hand, on the far right-hand side, it says number of students. And that was where I pulled that number from. That was the number of students who were offered this survey. And I did not think to question what number of students qualified for. What I should have done, and what you see now, are these two numbers here, are all student groups, no matter which way they voted, combined. So that was an error, certainly on my part. Now, it doesn't necessarily change the percentages as you go through. Why not? Because when I created our charts, and here's what our charts look like, right? I can open them up. I'll do this one as an example. Of course, it's going to be slow. And then I put the data in here to show, to show the, so I was pulling that from the correct area. It is the total count of students that was pulled from the wrong area. So again, when we look at this slideshow, we've added a, a piece of information on there for anyone who's viewing it to know that initially it did say 9,347 students completed it. The number was inaccurate. The questionnaire was delivered to that many students. 6,810 responded.
Okay, question.
Yes, ma'am.
So the slide that you just showed with the green figures and the columns and numbers, did we get that?
This one?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, you did.
Okay, because in the final product, because as you said, that came out, information came out to us several different times. I don't know where to even find that.
I'm happy to share it with you again. Ms. Cass asked for that.
Yeah, I actually requested.
And for the Survey Monkey breakdown data, and I provided that as well. So now I want to talk about the addition of slide five. She's not pretty, right? But that's okay. So this is directly from Survey Monkey. You'll see, if I scroll down here, right, you can see that that's how Survey Monkey presents their data. And so what I wanted, the reason for adding this slide, even though the information certainly is the same on the next slide, those percentages never changed. They never changed, is because I wanted to be transparent about the number. There were questions about who participated and, and why numbers were changing. And I wanted to be transparent about the fact that once they got to this question, 6,909 parents, teachers, community members, completed this question. A little bit of a drop-off from question two, but that's not altogether unusual. There are a lot of people who do demographic information quick and then need, realize I need to read, and I need to think about something, and I really want to process it, and they shut that window down and they come back later, right? So that's not altogether unusual. But I did want to be transparent about the number, and that's why we added that number in. Why do we use something different? By using something different, I'm able, not just to show you the chart of everybody, but then I'm able to break the data down and show you Auburn, Blacksburg, Christiansburg, and Eastern Montgomery. I'm able to show you the community responses to those questions. And so those were all of the changes that were made over a period of time yesterday, all yesterday. But I did want to explain that to you, just so you would have the knowledge about why that occurred. If you'll give me just one moment, I'm going to switch those computers back, and we'll present the, the full presentation. I did also want to point out, while I'm rehooking this other computer and waiting for the fellows in the back to give me the thumbs up that I did it properly, that when the student survey first went out, there was a graphic on the top of that student survey that said, return to learn. The title of that survey, or that, or that Google Form initially also had similar language. And we changed the title of the form. We didn't catch the change in the graphic. As soon as we did, we changed that graphic because we knew return to learn wasn't the proper phrasing to use. And so we changed it to a student questionnaire. But while we talk about all of the many things that we did to, to try and make everything better as we moved through that process, I didn't want to leave that piece of information out. So I know you've reviewed this presentation and had some time with it, multiple versions, but that's okay. We haven't changed it since 10:30 last night. That was the last edit that I made to this presentation and emailed directly to you. So what I do want to do is just, I'll speak very briefly about each slide, what you see on each slide. Again, this is an opportunity for people who are watching to see the data who maybe haven't been able to get into Board Docs to view it. So our first question from our Survey Monkey data is, what is your role with M C P S? And you can see teachers, other staff, that's other M C P S staff, parents of students who are in person, parents of students who are remote, and community members. And then our second question, we always ask, which community do you represent? Once again, this slide is showing the history that we have been seeing with the, with the information gathering that we do in our community and that all of our communities are fairly well-represented when we look at the percentage of our student population that they represent. And this was the question that was asked. This was the final question that was asked. We did want to make sure that, especially our parents, would know that this didn't indicate the option for their child. That they would be, if, if the plan were to be implemented by the board, that they would be given the option to indicate that at a later date. We weren't tying them into something. Again, this is the slide that we added for increased transparency to show the number of people who responded. And then we did full breakdowns of the data. So on this slide, you can see all categories except for students. So that includes all of the groups that we discussed before, except for students. And then you can see the breakdown by community. Please let me know if I'm moving too fast. And on the next slide, we added students in. So we took the data from two different places, right? We took the Survey Monkey data, we took the data from the Google spreadsheet that you saw, and we were able to bring that together as well. So we see those all categories, and then again by community. We have our teachers. We have M C P S other staff. That can include building-level administrators, school nutrition workers, transportation, aides in the classroom, anyone who's not a classroom specialty or elective teacher. We have all parents. You'll see parents broken down as well, but this is all parents. Parents of students who are in person. And that could be in-person, fully or in-person on a hybrid model when you talk about our secondary students. Parents of students who are fully remote or virtual. We have our community. And these could be grandparents who maybe aren't custodial guardians, others who, who live in the community, business owners. You certainly represent all taxpayers. And then we have students. And the reason why we have our students mostly grouped separately is because they were asked a different question. The question was designed to gain the same answer. But what we had to do was write a question that could be easily understood from kindergarten through 12th grade. And that's, that's not altogether easy. I, I have needed a lot of help with that, and I'm fortunate to get that from, from our deputy superintendent and our superintendent. And then we also made sure to communicate with parents that this question was being asked of their students. So that, we did that at least twice. Schools often did it a third time. Twice, I know from me, a third time, hopefully, from every school, so that no parent was surprised when their child said that they had this question on their check-in form. Those days happened to be inclement weather for us. And so we'll see all students, again, broken down by community. And so we'll see all students, again, broken down by community. Students who are in-person. And students who are fully remote or virtual. And that's the last. Those are the last of the slides that I have for you tonight. All of this information is available in Board Docs. This exact slideshow is in Board Docs as well.
Thank you, Ms. Drake. We were originally going to have a time for discussion prior to the motion, but Ms. Cass correctly pointed out to us that the section in Robert's roles, that a motion should be made before there is discussion. Is there any board member who wishes to make a motion regarding the phase and level change proposal?
I'll make a motion that we stay at the level that we're at, at the present time.
I'll second.
Ms. Drake, we have a motion and a second for, that's on the floor. Can we have a roll call, please?
Would you like to open up discussion, Ms. Graham?
I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. I would like to open up discussion. So Penny, you made the motion first. You can start with this discussion.
Okay, so first, let me say that I appreciate everyone who took part, took part in helping us come to these decisions, whether it be email, phone calls, personal conversations, taking the survey. Engagement is what we really need in the community to make sure we're making the best decisions we can make, along with data. So I'll start by saying, the survey that was put out this last week, and how that information, for me as a board member, came yesterday, multiple times, in different ways, to the point that I didn't even see some of what Ms. Drake was referring to. Which is, yeah, doesn't make me real happy right now. So, I understand all the issues that are affecting our community related to COVID, and it has turned this whole country upside down, and education has been hugely impact, This is probably one of the most difficult decisions that I have ever had to make as serving on this board, and I thought I had made some difficult ones. Trying to make sure I'm being respectful and understanding of all segments of the community, everyone who is in our school system, from the students to our superintendent. And trying to make sure I'm doing it in a way that I feel is going to best serve everyone. Folks may not agree, we don't agree, I think we've all come to that, that we do not agree on many of the reasons why we think it should go one way or the other. For me, it really revolves around a couple of issues. Safety, and the amount of time that is going to occur if we change this. And we have gone back and forth because of the level of COVID in the community, and for folks who think that we are going backwards, I, again, do not agree with that, because the only time we've gone backwards is to, is for safety reasons. I do not agree that the spread, that the lack of spread in our schools is truly, that's what that is. Because there is not enough testing done with school-aged children to say that they are not carrying the COVID vaccine virus with them and spreading it. Because they can be asymptomatic, and they still spread it. I have been in schools in each one of our communities. I have talked to teachers, administrators, custodians. I really didn't get a chance to talk to cafeteria workers. I've talked with our office staff. And I've watched students function at the level that we're at now, and in many of our schools, especially the elementary schools. I truly cannot understand how we can put more students in many of these classrooms and be able to maintain a safe environment for our students, for our teachers, for our staff, and quite frankly, for our families. Because I do believe it does spread within the whole community, and that means within our schools too. We just don't do the testing in this whole country to show that. The workload that has been put on our school personnel has been unbelievable. Teachers who have been teaching for 30 years are saying it's like starting my first day of teaching all over again, and then having to switch and having to change. If this were January, I may have a totally different outlook on it. But by the time this is implemented, and we try to get folks back into some kind of routine, because this whole word about, you know, getting back to normal, it's not going to be normal. Kids are going to be wearing masks and shields, sitting behind barriers, sitting in tents, which there's a huge safety issue related with tents also. It's not going to be normal. You're not going to be able to interact with each other the way you would normally interact, or we have normally interacted with each other. Kids aren't going to be able to really be touching each other. It's not going to be normal. So it is, I just don't think we should move at this time. Because before, between the time we end school in May and the time we start back to school in August, there are probably going to be guidelines and things that will change with any plan that we may have in place to get things started for the next year. So I just don't see the need. I don't see why we need to stress people out more by changing something that is working relatively well, considering everything, for the time that we have. And the variants that are out there, that will still be impacting the community, I just don't think now's the time to do it.
Ms. Vaughn?
I'm going to let someone else go.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chabaka?
So, I'm just going to make some high-level points again. At some point, I might want to come back to some of those in some detail, but, you know, this is, I want to point out that this is something that I actually pushed for in the fall. So this is not something that I am against, especially the schedule. And I also want to point out that there's really two things that we're doing here. We're not just switching to Phase 3, Level 3, or, sorry, yeah, Phase 3, Level 3. We're also changing the schedule. So those are two different things that we are doing. And the reason I pushed for it then is because I saw then, I really saw pretty early in the fall and summer when we were talking about schedules, how much time we were losing. There was a lot of unknowns then. You know, we basically did the best that we could with what we knew. Once we got into the fall, you guys all know that I was definitely one to want to be a little bit more cautious on the health side. But once we got in the middle of fall, and we started to get some indication that, you know, some of the fears that we had were not as bad, I was pushing for basically this kind of a thing, thinking that when the numbers came down to a good level, we could then more seamlessly make that switch. And like Ms. Penny's, or, sorry, like Ms. Franklin said last week, you know, we went through all of this, and I got a lot of input from teachers then, and from parents and students that, you know, and I'll be honest, at the time, I did not realize the extent to which they were working, to the extent to which their world had been turned upside down. And, you know, at the time, especially in the fall, I don't think, I think there's less people saying it now, but there was kind of this feeling among some parents, well, you know, you've got Wednesday off, so to speak, and you've, you know, my kids are only going half-time, and I'm only getting half of the thing that I got last year, so that must mean that you're only working half the time. And of course, that's not true. And of course, what we're coming to find is that the teachers are working, and staff, are working not just full-time, but over-full-time. I don't even want to take a guess at how much over-full-time. And so, I think we've gotten to a point in the year where I think there is some political pressure for us to go back, for whatever reasons. And, you know, I see this as kind of a last gasp, because we're running out of time to do it, basically. But when we're dealing with the issue of, is this what's best for education? Is this what's best for mental health? Those were the two things that were brought up initially. It's, I think the answer is resoundingly, no, this is not going to be the best overall. Might it be the best for some students, or some groups of students, or some percentage of families? Of course. But we're making public policy at a high level. So for me, you know, the question is, are we getting the, you know, there's a cost that comes with this, and it's a high cost in both risk and in effort and morale, and driving people to do more changes and messing with students' routines and things like that. Is it worth it at this point in the year? And you don't have to look much past, I mean, I've said no. I posted before the, before the survey results came out, I posted a couple pretty long Facebook posts with a lot of details in them, and one dedicated to academic student well-being. I told you guys I would do this last week, and I did it. And, you know, I've made these points, I have collected most of them from students, parents, and teachers who have written to me, because they're, they're in the front lines on this. And so I think the answer to that is really no, and we can certainly talk in more detail about some of those if people want to. I think that, like Ms. Franklin said, the new variants and the case numbers that we're seeing in our county right now, I mean, just today even, I think we have to look at this possibility that we will make this change and then be forced to shut down at some point in the future, which could actually have the exact opposite effect on instructional time than what we wanted. So, on the health side, at a high level, I was, I think Ms. Karan made a good statement last week when she said the term was armchair, was it armchair epidemiologist, was it? Or armchair researcher? I don't know. And I started thinking about that, and I think for me, on this, if you drew a scale from one side to another of where everybody is, you have some people who maybe are just uninformed, say, "Just do this, just do this, just send them back," or, "It's not safe. Don't do it," right? Then maybe you have people who are, you know, reading articles and educating themselves as best they can, but maybe they're not experts. And then you get to the point where you have maybe researchers, you have people who maybe are experts in one area, or, and they have opinions. And then you have organizations that pull together the opinions of many experts. And so basically, on this continuum of epidemiology, you know, what is at the top of that? And for me, what's at the top is the large organization, the largest organization that you possibly can have. And initially, we didn't get guidance from the CDC, but as of a few weeks ago, we did, right? And I think that there's been a lot of efforts to hand-wave some of their findings and some of their recommendations, which are current, by the way, and recent. Now, I can certainly accept that, you know, they have the level here, and, you know, we can, we can do this because we've got an extra mitigation, or something like that. But, you know, when our levels are something like 42 times what they recommend for even being open, and we're charging ahead with full-time, something's off there. And I do think that we need, not just, I don't think this is something that we need necessarily from, from our staff, but we also need it from the, from the Health Department, from the, from that community, you know, real explanations on this. My kids know what they're supposed to do because we've been teaching them all year. And there's a lot of kids in that, in that boat, and now you're going to come and tell them, "It's okay, you don't have to do six feet, you can only do three feet." In fact, you don't have to do three feet, you can do three feet with this other thing." You know, it's, there's a lot of hand-waving here that's going on, and I don't want to belabor it, but I think we should be listening to the CDC guidance. I think a lot of our community does, and we need to do the same. On the mental health side, I think there's really been no strong link made between making this change and improving mental health. Yes, we know that kids need to be in school, they need normalcy is what they need, they need routine. We've had several experts in counseling and other mental health fields tell us that in the last few weeks. And so the argument that, that changing the schedule and bringing more kids in, there's no evidence we're bringing the right kids in, if there are kids that are struggling to that degree on mental health that haven't been brought in already. There's no evidence that that's going to improve it, and I think there's a lot of circumstantial evidence that we're actually going to harm it. And then on the staffing side, I mean, morale issues. We talked a lot last week about, about, you know, teachers, and I think, you know, Ms. Karan, I think you brought up not knowing if, you know, that what we're hearing from teachers, or what was said in the thought exchange, was really representative of all of our teachers. And now we have a survey that basically shows us that 76% are saying no. I mean, I don't, if there was a good reason, if 76% of teachers wanted a raise and there wasn't money, I would say to them, "I'm really sorry, there isn't money." That's a good reason to say, "We're not going to give you the raise." But there has to be a really good reason why we are going to go against 76% of teachers in our county on this recommendation. And I'll also add, and I said this last week, I will say it again, this is a unique year. They are the ones with the most experience dealing with classrooms in a pandemic. They're a unique group, they're the ones that are the closest to it, they know what's going on. So, you know, I, that's something for me that I think we need to listen, listen to. And beyond just the technical, you know, beyond the expert opinion of these teachers, I think that to basically push that aside for no good reason is really, it's already causing morale issues, and I think we're just, we're going to exasperate our problems down the road. You know, in the, the future is another reason why I think I'm voting no on this tonight, or voting not to move up levels at this time, is, you know, I really think that until the health situation looks better, we really need to be focusing on the things that we know are going to help in the future with kids who have fallen behind, or kids who are struggling this year. And that's summer school, and that's our efforts, what our efforts are going to look like in the future. And that's something that I really wish that we had spent this, this month talking about instead. So that's kind of my high-level thought process on this for now.
Thank you. Sue?
I'm going to pass for now. Thank you, Martin.
Sure. Gunin?
Sure. First of all, thank you again, for all of you, for reaching out. I did read everything. I did not respond to everyone. I tried. By the end of Sunday, I was catching up with, but Monday and Tuesday, and then Saturday, I was really knocked down with the second COVID shot, so couldn't function much, so... But I did read, so everyone knows that I heard every opinion, every research shared, every individual story shared, then what is wanted, what is not wanted. I get that all. And I guess that's why it makes this decision and conversation is hard. But I really have to tell, my personal disappointment is I'm really... But I really have to tell, uh, my personal disappointment is I'm really sick and tired of living in an environment where we have to be pitted against each other, whether it is board members to board members, teachers to parents, or all the pitting is going on, um, which doesn't help the situation. And I think it's not productive going, uh, down the road, and I don't think it's setting a good example to the students either. When this is, this decision, um, decision-making was left to us a year ago, it's almost a year ago, March, March, uh, last year, because there was no one solution to fit all the needs. So it was easy to, you know, federal and state officials to, um, you know, let the can go down the road. Uh, because obviously it is proven to be true, we can even agree in our division level. Can you imagine the decision-making in state level and national level then? So we ask, uh, we are asked at times to rely on, uh, two things. One was local school division, and then the other one was local health district. Uh, our local school division was first in the region to be ready. We had a plan before Governor called to shut down. I remember being in one of those meetings in February, uh, making the plans get ready. I was back in the PD Center, listening, all the administrative team, trying to figure out when the shutdown comes, what we're going to do. So the same division prepared a thorough plan to cover all the possible to grounds, move back, forth, back and forth, in-person, hybrid. And again, I believe that, you know, um, we have a lot of flexibilities. And I remember when the, these things happened, uh, we actually asked to help the other divisions around us with our plan. So we shared our plan, what to do. And we are lucky now that we do not have the March 15 deadline to open first time because we've been open. So my question is now, why I have to doubt about the system? And I have to think that they are not thinking what is best for our school community. Why now? Because I think we've been doing a pretty good job. And now comes the local health district. I think, again, we were one of the first in the area to form the task force. And then again, I think we helped other health districts. And the health district we are in has the lowest outbreaks in the Commonwealth, uh, provided probably the most vaccines to Southwest Virginia, and did a phenomenal job to organize and vaccinate our staff, as well as all the citizens under 1B guidelines. They are in the front lines with experience. Our epidemiologist has 25 years' experience and managed outbreaks in the military worldwide. So the question again, why now? I have to doubt that they are not thinking what is best for our community and what is best for our school community. Because I think we're doing pretty good around this area as well. Well, when it comes to the metric, CDC recently provided, there are multiple articles. And nowadays, everybody can Google and find any research they want, so I'm not, I'm not going to read any article. But what I read, more than 90% of the country is currently, if, if they, if they follow the CDC guideline, more than 90% of the country is currently, will be in a restricted tier. Yet many schools in such communities are already in-person and have done so for months without a problem. That doesn't mean without a case, obviously. There are cases. There's no 100%, uh, you know, proof situation. And when it comes to CDC guideline on six-foot distancing, also appears to be on decades-old research. One of the early skeptic, skeptics actually was a physician, Rochelle Walensky. She is now new head of the CDC. Back before her CDC time, or before heading the CDC, she actually commented to her local school district, "Three feet is quite safe and much more practical as long as everyone is masked." Of course, it is always the trick is being masked. And not just being masked in school, being masked is outside of school too. And the other, um, the other comment is from Dr. Joseph Allen. Uh, he is the Harvard School of Public Health person. And he reiterates that the room with 25 adults is different than 25 students. So when there are 25 students and three-foot distance with masks, it will be sufficient. But if you put 25 adults in a room, that's, of course, it's a total, you know, total different game, and it's not okay. Uh, when it comes to child abuse, domestic violence, mental health, these issues are real. And actually, I have an approach, an email with, by physicians that are unfortunately ERs, holding now mental health-struggling kids because there are not enough beds. So that's, uh, that's a real provable statistics, and that worries me every night. Because my own child had a mental health problem, so I know how it will feel for those parents that are struggling out there. Uh, when it comes to the expectation from schools and especially from teachers, it has never been fair. We all, you know, they always have to deal way more than they probably supposed to. The system divide, you know, put together, devised wrong and needs to be fixed. And pandemic, of course, uncovered it, but it probably is not the right time to fix. As soon as we are out of this long, dark tunnel, uh, we have to, we have to remember to advocate. You know, all the emails we receive, I want all those folks to advocate ferociously that so. Federal, state and local officials, you know, including us too, work on finding solutions, the need for childcare, mental health service, broadband access, solution to food insecurity, as well as 400-plus-years-old racial inequity. So that comes to question why we move forward now. I strongly believe that we're not going to be at a different level when, actually, August, we say for schools, but I think we have to make those decisions in July. So that actually makes it even closer. We're, we're going to be still in this. We're still have to use masks and mitigation is not going to go anywhere. The ages under 16, uh, according to, I think, Dr. Fauci, will probably not be vaccinated till fall 2022. You know, this is more than a year now. The change now will reintroduce us how to be in school all day. Not a normal day by any means, but longer hours for the pandemic. It will help us better prepare for the fall, especially now that we're heading spring. The weather is going to be nicer and warm, you know, the warmer and days are longer. So I think that's an opportunity to be able to test what is not working, what is working, and maybe in the meantime, uh, work or gain some grounds toward the learning loss and try to help with the stress and mental health issues that everybody is dealing, not just students. And it is hard to be prepared for something that, you know, you never experienced before. We never had pandemic before, so there's no, there's no way of knowing how we're going to handle next few months. And we have to start at one point. And I do not think anybody expects full recovery of what is lost as soon as we open the schools, you know. Uh, and it's just going to be just a step towards new normal. Lastly, I think we, I really have to believe we have to work together. Instead of pointing fingers and finding faults, let's make sure we'll have to make the plan work and be successful. What we do outside the schools and classrooms matter. We are responsible to follow the same mitigation, whether we are student, parent or teacher. And if we see where and when it's not working, we have to come together and point out if it is an additional mitigation need, let's work to provide that. We have to hold the administration accountable that is presenting the plan and assuring us that it's going to work. And if we need to do more cleaning in the classrooms, then let's see how we can do that. If we need more masks, make sure we have more masks. And if we need to write a letter or two to a parents that their kids are not wearing the masks, you know, let, let's do that. Let's send those letters. And if we see each other outside the school not following the mitigation, let's hold ourselves accountable that. Because unless we work collectively and collaboratively for the sake of our children, this pandemic is not going to go away by pushing down the road. That's all I have as far.
Thank you. Dana?
So out of respect, um, for everyone here and time consideration, and repeat things that have already been stated. I just want to make the comment that I agree tenfold with Ms. Karan. And, um, that I have to say that she did a great job describing everything as far as how our administration has gone to make this a safe choice. And all of the data that's there, that's factual. And that I believe that our administration has worked hard, and I think this is a choice that we should feel okay and safe with. And that we have provided the safety measures that we were told that were needed to put in place to make this choice happen. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Karan. I would like to also, um, agree with everything you said. I think I couldn't, I definitely couldn't have said it better. Um, does anyone have anything else they want to add?
Oh, I'd like to speak.
Jamie hasn't gone yet.
Jamie hasn't gone yet. Why don't you go ahead, Jamie?
I'll be glad to bring up the rear.
Yeah. Go ahead, Jamie, it would be your, it actually would be Penny's turn again, if you have something to add.
Well, wouldn't I, wouldn't we get to speak first, both of us?
Wait a minute, let's just go. You, you said I'll pass, and so.
Well, I, I said I'm going to let Jamie talk, and then I'm going to talk. We just agreed.
Sorry, these masks make things confusing. Um, I, I again agree, Goonin, you, you said that just eloquently. Um, I agree so much with everything, and I'm not going to just rehash everything that we talked about and said the last meeting and this one. I've read the emails too. Um, in fact, it, you can't go to sleep at night. I've been nervous all day. I've conceived, I've wrote down a thousand things and erased them and tore up because there's no easy fix for everybody. Someone's going to be upset. But, um, you know, I have to applaud our administration as well, and their staff. They, we, for years and years, everyone has said, we need to think outside the box on things. And that's what they've been trying to do. Yeah, some of the ideas might not be perfect idea for, or ideal for every school. And, but at least it's an idea. They're thinking outside the box. They're doing what we've asked them to do to try to make this situation work the best it can work. And I've gotten some emails that said, you know, you can't expect teachers to fix it all, and I don't. I can't imagine, um, I, I truly don't expect that. I, I know how hard they work. I'm not one that bashes. I do speak gracefully. I, I don't say anything about them being off on Wednesdays, um, or not being off or not having students on Wednesdays. Let me re, re-say that. But I also believe that students need each other. It's not always about students completely just depending on teachers or the staff in the schools, but students need each other. They share their problems with each other. They work together with schoolwork with each other. They, um, they smile to one another, and goodness knows, go out in the public, and not many people are smiling right now. And we need a little of that. I mean, it's, it's evident that there's definitely some problems and with how we, we treat one another. And it's, uh, I, I can't help but think we've got to do something. So the, a lot of the emails that I've read are, are desperate parents that are pleading for anything that can help them get students back on track, even if it is for a short time. Because I do agree with Ms. Karan, this isn't going anywhere. This is going to be, sad to say, probably an issue we're going to be talking about in the fall. And, and we've changed quite a few times this year. We've, um, you know, had all students go remote a couple of weeks in the fall, sporadically. I understand it was for safety reasons, but we still did it. Then we had, couldn't get substitutes, so we had 7th through 12th grade, um, an emergency call meeting to deal with that. We had to do it, I understand, but it was still a change. We, um, went later a month going into school to try to deal with some of the issues and try to help people prepare, teachers prepare, schools prepare, um, parents prepare. But there's been lots of changes this year, and we've dealt with them. So I, I don't see this as being that much different of a change that we need to work through together. And I agree completely with what Goonin said. We've got to find a way. And how can we find what's working if we don't try it and try to move forward? Not that we're doing anything wrong, but we know we can't stay here completely. We've got to continue on. I look at the survey. I know the survey's not perfect. I understand everybody sees the survey in a different way. But from the last few meetings, that's all I've heard, is we need a survey, we need to be transparent, we need to hear from our community, we need to hear from the teachers, we need to hear from the parents, we need to hear from the students. Well, this is trying to, trying to ask some and show some as much as possible. And the numbers that I'm seeing, I don't understand how we can argue with. Especially, I'm going to stand up for my district that voted me in. And I understand that I, I am here to represent the whole county, but we also represent our districts, and we are their voice. And I'm standing up for my district because I'm looking at the survey, and it's obvious what they want. So I, I have to listen to that voice.
Thank you. Sue?
Okay. Thank you. I ran for the school board because I felt that it would be helpful to have somebody on the board who understood the role of a teacher. And this debate we've been having over the last several months just reinforces my belief that that is important. I understand that Dr. Meyer is responsible for making decisions for our schools, but I think it's the board's responsibility to make, to make decisions for all of its constituents. I feel that the administration's looked to experts for their opinions on the health issues. Um, I wish we had expanded our, uh, experts pool outside of just the local experts. I think there are many other experts in this field who we could have been looking to, to help us with our decision-making. But I think that, I'm not going to talk a whole lot about the virus because I think a whole lot's been said about that tonight and over, over time. The other piece of this, though, that I think is so important that we need to really focus on, and that is our students and the academics and what it's going to be like when they return to school. And just like we have looked to our local experts to help us with all of the information on how to mitigate in our classrooms and how to make sure we keep our students safe, we have almost a thousand experts who work for our school system. And 75% of them said we should leave things the way they are. They don't think it's a good idea that we bring our students back into the classroom. But we aren't listening to them, and we haven't really listened to them. As we have put together these plans, I think, I, I understand the desire to get it done and that Dr. Meyer wanted to make things happen. And he enlisted his, his group and his employ, his central, um, school board office people to do a whole lot, an unimaginable amount. But I don't believe that we've. But I don't believe that we've, and from the comments that you hear from our teachers and our staff, I don't think that we have gotten them involved in this at all. That we, or not at all, but not enough. They, I feel like we should have reached out to our teachers more, especially as we've gotten to this point here. And here we reach out and do a survey, and we ask for your opinion. We do a thought exchange. Tell us, answer this question. They give you their thoughts and opinions. Nobody says anything about them. And then we have a survey. And overwhelmingly, teachers are saying, "Let's leave things the way they are." And we're not listening to them. I, not only was I a teacher, but I also have worked in human resources for 15 years as an HR manager. And one of the important parts of having strong employees is employee morale and making sure that you keep your employees motivated. And I think that what has happened over these last several months has been absolutely demoralizing and de-motivating for our teaching population and our staff. Not all of them feel that way, but the majority of them feel that way. And I just want to just quickly, I'm just gonna read a comment that was sent to me today because I think it really encapsulizes a lot of what has happened over the last couple of days. And so, I think most of us know that this is a foregone conclusion, what's going to happen. Because it's been quite obvious over the last several weeks that there is a push by our administration that we are going to send kids back full-time. And there is a push by the majority of the board to go in that direction also. And we have made it really obvious to people that we are doing that. So, we put out a survey, and no offense to those who did the survey, well, I shouldn't say that. Unfortunately, the survey was a very flawed survey. And there are a whole lot of questions about even the reliability of the responses. But we put out a survey. We asked for information. But we don't care because we're already going this route. So, this morning, I got from three different teachers a picture of something new in their room, in their classroom. And it is, I guess, an air filtration device. Is that what you would call it? Air cleanser? And this is the comment that was sent to me. "I appreciate all that you've done to protect our schools and community during this pandemic. I think many have resigned themselves to what they believe is inevitable. We, as usual, feel used, powerless, and trapped. The timing of the distribution of these air cleansers could not have been worse. It has provoked feelings of anger, sadness, distrust, surrender, et cetera. Many people feel like it was an intentional "in-your-face" or "it's happening, so get used to it" move. They should not have brought these in today. They could have waited until tomorrow after the vote." That is not a group of people who are, work, these are the people who you are asking every day to teach your children. But I will say one other thing. That these individuals, on almost every single email that they would send to us, asking us to say no, at the end, they would say something like, "But I'll do whatever's decided upon because I care about my students." Because it's what teachers do. Because it's what MCPS does. Why do we take advantage of our teachers like this? Why do we not respect their ideas, their observations, their knowledge? If we decided to go back full-time, if we decide, which is already decided, we all know that, if we decide to go back full-time, we've lost a lot of their respect. They'll still do their job, but they're not going to respect their administration. We're, if we're not going to listen to them... So, basically, what I hear people saying is, "We don't want to listen to you, but we want you to work even harder." Parents are complaining that they want their children to have more school, and you want your children to spend more time with these people. You want your children to spend all day with them now. Yet, what I'm, what we get is responses like, "Why don't teachers want to go back to work? What have they been doing for the last how many months?" They're working. They're working really hard. Just like everybody is. We are all working hard. We are all struggling. Parents, children, teachers, administrators, everyone in this country is struggling. We all are having struggles. And what about the students? At least half the students are saying, "We'd rather leave things the same." But then the excuse is, "Oh, well, they don't know what they're talking about. I'm their parent, and I know they need to go back to school." Well, why do we ask their opinion if we don't really want to hear it? There are plenty of students out there who know what works for them, and we should respect their opinion. So, we don't respect teachers' opinions. We don't respect students' opinions. And we've made a decision because we think it's the right thing for them. At this point, I, I think that, as someone who's worked in HR, as I said, if this is how I treated my employees, I would not be able to keep, my company would never stay running. I wouldn't have any employees. They'd quit and go find other jobs where they're respected and cared about. But we know that we have to hold them hostage. I hear it all the time. "Well, where are they gonna go?" "They're not gonna go anywhere. There's no other jobs. They have to stay here." That's really sad. So, I hope when we make this decision, I hope it all goes well. And you gotta know that the teachers will do everything they can to make it work because that's what they do, because that's what their job is. Please don't ever say, "Teachers don't work." That because they're teaching, that right now, that they need to go back to work. I want to just leave with one passing thought, and then I'm done. Because I really do think there's probably a little more I can say at this point. This is a quote from Maya Angelou, and I'll just close with this. "People will forget what you said. People will forget what you did. But people will never forget how you made them feel." Think about how we've made our teachers feel. I'm done.
Thank you. Mark? Penny?
Okay, so, you know, like Ben said, many of us have said, "We don't need to just keep going round and round." But there are a couple of things I still want to say here. So, Goonin, you did a great job of laying out some of the information. Everybody has worked really hard, and not everything has worked. We just don't talk about them the way we talk about how everything works. Okay? So, going back now and thinking that's gonna prepare us for the winter, I don't think that's gonna be the same situation. Because like this winter, it wasn't like anything like last winter. So, this is an issue for me that has bothered me from the very beginning when we were making decisions and being asked to vote on how we would move forward with opening our schools. And that is having the personnel to be able to do the things that we were asked to vote on. One of the big first ones was about AIDS with the bus drivers. And then all of a sudden, we were gonna have that, then it went away. Then we threw other AIDS and assistance all on buses to try to get that covered. And we still don't have the custodial staff that we said we were gonna have, which does cause some problems in the school. And it does cause AIDS with the teachers and administrators because things just can't get cleaned the way they're supposed to be cleaned because we just don't have the personnel to do it. And again, I was in the buildings. I talked to these folks. So, when we say, you know, "Things have been going okay, and we've made it through," well, folks are still struggling with how we're making it through. And I understand parents are struggling too. But as been said over and over again, we are all struggling through this change that the world is going through because of this pandemic. And quite frankly, we'll probably have more after that. But we will have learned some good lessons from dealing with this. But I just don't think moving forward, because we gotta keep moving forward at this time, is the thing that we need to do. I can't wait to see how we're gonna reopen in the fall because it's gonna look so much different than where we are now. But I don't think moving now to make things look better in the fall is what we should be doing because we don't know what the fall is gonna look like.
Okay, thank you. Mark?
So, I'll try to work in some answers to some of the things that were said along with a few new things that I kinda wanted to add. So, the last couple of meetings on this, I have said that one of my concerns has been the process on this. One of the things that bothers me the most is the fact that we did not get input from teachers on this decision before we moved forward with the recommendation. And I know that the superintendent gave us a list of some things that were done that I think was supposed to allay us into thinking that we did get that input. But, you know, if I come to you and I say, "I'm gonna do this." What's the best way to do it, all right? Versus me coming to you and saying, "I have this problem to solve. How do you think I should do it?" Or, "I wanna solve the problem by doing this. What do you think?" There's a big difference in those two things. And what we did was the former and not the latter. There's a reason that, well, I'll skip that part. But I think that the input that we got from teachers, we got through, we had to read between the lines. We had to read our emails. It wasn't highlighted, even though it's glaringly obvious, both in the survey and in the thought exchange and also in our emails. And I think it was expected. So, the, this leads me to another point. I think the information that's provided to the school board, in my opinion, is, and not just in my opinion, quite frankly, there's a lot of people watching these meetings this year. You all know that, right? And so, we get a lot of, we get a lot of input from our constituents, a lot more than we have in the past. So, I know that I'm not the only one who feels this way. But it's incomplete, and it's one-sided. You know, I've said this publicly in the past that I believe that when we're faced with decisions where we're being asked to vote on something, "Give me the pros. Give me the cons. Give me all the information. And give me your professional recommendation." I want to hear that too. But then, you know, leave the decision to me. Don't try to, don't try to present things in a way that is trying to get a certain outcome. And I feel like that's what's been happening here. And I think that that's further dividing our community. I think it's breeding mistrust. So, I'm upset to see that happening. I still think that, you know, we got all this input. I summarized it. I've made these arguments. No one is really talking about the technical arguments of this, which is, no one's really talking about the evidence that this change that we're gonna make is actually going to help in some significant way. We've gotten a lot of slides about how bad things are. We've gotten, you know, surveys and things like that. But nobody's talking about some of these points. We're making assumptions. We're not following back around them. And I think that that's, that's too bad. I want to highlight some of those things that we haven't talked about very much. You know, there's, the people working closest with the kids are overwhelmingly opposed. That's teachers and counselors. Marginalized students and families are gonna struggle the most. I laid the stuff out. Teachers have laid out. Some of them have written to us and basically begged us about the kids that are now coming either half-time or full-time that really need to be there. And if we make this move, those kids are gonna get pulled out. We haven't talked about, we haven't really wrestled with this fact that this is a big change and that we are going, it's not just a change academically in schedules. It's a change with the mitigation, what that's gonna look like. We're not talking about, you know, the teachers have basically said, "This is gonna be very disruptive, and you're not gonna get that time that you think you're gonna get." And the answer to that is crickets. And I think that there's also the issue of remote kids. I mean, we go to great lengths in this county to do what's best for everyone. We go to great lengths, you know, for even a minority population. And I think that that's a great thing. We have a significant minority population of kids that are attending remote. And as your survey showed, there is, they are overwhelmingly opposed to this, and it's obvious why, and teachers have told us why. We still haven't grappled with any of that. So, I'll stop there on that point. But I find it disappointing that we're not dealing with the technical matters at hand. I think we're also, you know, ignoring the survey. I want to just highlight a couple of things on this survey, if I can pull it up. I mean, again, the overall response on this survey, I mean, you could say we're split, but it's slightly greater on the nose. And the, let's see, where is it here? The parents of students who are in-person, 27.7%, roughly 30% of those parents are telling us, "Don't do this." And this is what we're hearing also through some of the emails, that we know that there are kids that are going to school now that if we do this, they're gonna get pulled out. So, they're gonna go from 50% to zero, while other kids go from 50% to 100%. I think that's a bad trade. And then finally, is it finally? Yeah. So, finally, I just want to say that with all of these things in mind, I mean, I think it's clear, especially between the survey and some of the other things I said about how all this data is presented and talked about or not talked about, that, you know, I think that there's some bias here. I think that there are some political pressures that are being put on us. The decision that we're making is, and Sue is absolutely right, this is a decision for the board. It's a political decision. It's a decision that involves the whole community. It involves many facets of that. It's health. It's, you know, it's academics. It's staffing. It's all these things. We need all the information. And what we get instead is cherry-picked information. If we're gonna be citing Harvard World Health Institute for something, then are we gonna talk about the fact that we've been ignoring their metrics for going back to school all year? You know, I'm disappointed that the local VDH hasn't engaged us in explaining the CDC guidance and explaining why. We can toss it aside. You know, what the school board got in our communication was a Vox article, V-O-X, not Fox, as in Fox News, basically making an argument about schools in Massachusetts against teachers' unions. You know, I mean, I still don't see any, I don't see data. I don't see widespread support. I see a lot of cherry-picking. And I'm just disappointed in all of that. And I'm not as eloquent as Sue is when I'm angry. But I'm angry because I think that, you know, the reason I got on the school board is because I believe in local democracy. And I've seen, and it's very easy, I mean, I know we're having a big debate nationally on, you know, the subversion of democracy. But there's also ways that democracy gets subverted. And I'm not saying necessarily intentionally, but it gets subverted. And the will of the people doesn't happen for various reasons. And I, that's what I see happening with this process. And I'm just really disappointed that this is the way we've decided to go about it. So, I'll stop there.
Thank you. Goonin, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, a few things regarding why this proposal presented by the administration, I believe because this is the next step we had on our level and phase chart that we, as a board, decided. And we did not come up with anything different. And we did not come up with anything different between those two, the levels and phases we are in, and the level and phase that we're about to, or, you know, discussion, discussing about. We did not come up, we didn't agree on anything and suggest to the administration, "How about work on this?" So, so now we are saying that they, you know, forced that level on us, I don't think it's And there are also, a lot of parents are sending emails and begging us to get their kids to school all day, and they cannot handle anymore. So, what to answer to those? And the other thing is, I don't know about any of you guys, I don't want to speak on anybody's behalf, but if anybody knows me eight years, and, and the 21 years in the community, that I'm the least political person to decide on a, be on the political side and make a decision. But I'm really worrying about, and I have utmost respect, I know it sounds like you're not going to believe that because I'm not listening, teachers. And I wish it didn't come to that point, because that's why it is to me pitting the parents against teachers. So, you, either the teachers that, I mean, parents that their student, uh, in-person wants to send them, you know, full, 75%, more than 70%, 75% in one of our communities, and I guess the least one is 68. And I couldn't even say, I wish like Miss Bond, I could have said, "Hey, my constituents wants this, so I can do this." I even tell you that, even my constituents are half and half. I had enough from my District A, wanted to open all full, you know, in-person, and then enough said, "This is not what we want." So, as even a representative of District A, I didn't have a, you know, one direction or the other to be pushed and make a decision. So, again, it's coming back, you know, and pitting us each other, you know, do we want to listen to parents' wishes? Do you want to listen to teachers' wishes? Yeah, teachers are the ones that, you know, obviously they in and out in doing it. But again, we cannot stay close forever either, especially now that everyone else is trying to also open too. So, if we are not going to do this now, we have to do the same conversation. Yeah, maybe sharp, I, I hope the conditions are, will be better. Obviously, we want to go to better conditions, but I don't think we can, we're going to eliminate the mitigation in, in, when it comes to August. I don't think we're going to eliminate the masks. So, whatever we are doing, and teachers are doing, going to be doing the same thing. And hopefully with, you know, full, everyone in school and still remote availability, obviously, we didn't even guarantee that for August, so that's going to be a decision anyway down the road. But for time being, at least not all the students are actually really in the building to try this. Because in August, we don't even know if we're going to offer remote or not, all right? At this time, I know we have the virtual school, so that's going to be total different stress and discussion when time comes. So, I don't want to leave the teachers alone struggling, that's not my idea. But if there's a plan, my idea is trying to make and work that plan, instead of trying to completely disregard the plan. So, if there's going to be more help they need, you know, let's, let's volunteer and help. I mean, I'll be happy to go every day once a school and help with lunch. And I think this whole community has to look at it that way, than, you know, the board is doing something teachers want, or board is doing something that parents want. I think at the end, I, the idea is get the kids back to school. And I don't think avoiding it now is a solution.
Thank you. Dana?
I'm good. Um, I'm sorry, Jamie Stern?
Um, we're, we're getting-
Did you have anything else?
Oh, I was just going to say, I agree, and, um, Mr. Chabaka, I have to say some things on some of the things you were talking about cherry-picking. I don't look at it that way. My iPad died, so y'all have to forgive me because I don't have a plug-in. But all categories said 57.40%, yes, it was no-no. And, and the parents of, yeah, it might have been 27, Christiansburg is 73, almost 74%. Blacksburg's almost 70%, Auburn's almost 76%, Eastmont's almost 80%.
I'm sorry, on which, which category? Which category?
Parents of students in person. That's the one you used in your comments. Those are the four yes. Those are big numbers. They're not little, they're big. Okay? So, when I'm looking at this, whether it's cherry-picking, whether it's a right survey, it's still, the only way, unless you're going to go to every single home in Montgomery County and explain to people what it means for in-person learning or remote learning, and ask their opinion, and ask them to, to do something right there, the only way you're going to have any kind of a feedback from a community is to do a survey, whether it's perfect or not. And trust me, my granddaughter even sat there and said, "Mimi, I couldn't get mine open, I couldn't figure it out." So, I understand that there's some things like that that didn't happen, but it happened for the children that want to go back as much as the ones that didn't. So, with that argument, no disrespect-
I think, I think you totally misunderstood my argument on that, Jamie.
You, you said, quote, "27% of the parents of students in person said they didn't want their students to go back." All I'm sharing is the numbers of that same graph you used of the positive that do want their students to go back. And you said, "If we look at all of the graphs, it basically says no." That's not what I saw.
Can I clarify?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, the, the point I'm making on Slide 11, on the, on the 27 point, can I round up and say 28? On the 28% who said no, all right? The only point I'm making there is, is that there is a large swath of parents who currently send their students in that are going to pull them back if we move forward. I'm not saying it's a majority, I'm just saying that it's a sizable minority.
I understand that you were painting the picture.
And that it's a bad, and that it's a bad trade in those situations.
I, I understand what you, what you were saying, but that still painted the picture to be different, and I don't think that's fair.
Well, I, I think if you want to talk overall, then, I mean, isn't the overall roughly split with a slight tilt towards no? That's on Slide 7. That's everything, that's all categories.
Excuse me, could you give, um, could you give Jamie a chance to log in?
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
It's hard to talk and log in at the same time.
Anyway, I, I just want to make clear that I am not trying to say that on Slide 11, yes, absolutely, most of the parents of students who are in-person, 72%, want their, want their children to go in at the next level. I'm not disputing that. Okay? But when we were given the data early on, the assumption that was made, because we didn't have this data, the assumption that was made was that all the kids who, all the kids who currently go will continue to go, and all the kids who are remote will stay remote. Right? And I was just pointing out that there's a sizable number that are going to go from 50% in-person to 0% in-person. That's my only point on this, I just wanted to clarify.
Jamie, did you have more you wanted to add? Okay, so we've had lots of discussion on this. Can I finish speaking, please?
I'm sorry, I thought it was my turn.
Thank you. Um, we've had lots of discussion on this issue. Does anyone have anything new to add?
Yes, I, I, not that I-
Yes, me too.
-have anything new to add, it's just that I think it's my turn to speak, because everybody else had an opportunity to speak twice and I only spoke once.
Everyone has had an opportunity to speak twice.
I have not.
Not, Sue.
You waved your first time.
Oh, please, Marty. I did not wave, I said, "I'll go after, I'll go after Jamie."
Yeah, she did.
That's, you know, Marty, even, that's, I feel like you are just really trying to avoid allowing me to speak. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but whenever, it's just, it's a never-ending stream of shutting me down.
The first time I asked you, you said, "I'll pass."
I said, "I'd like, I'd said, "I'd like to let, I'm going to let Jamie," because Jamie, we looked at each other, and I said, "I'm going to let Jamie go now."
I wasn't even going to Jamie next. I said, "You said, 'I'll pass.'"
Okay, so, so, so I won't speak now. So, anybody out there, if you'd like to know what I had to say, you'll have to wait because the chairman of our school board has said I cannot speak. Is that, is that, would that be what you're telling me?
That was not what I was saying. Thank you for putting words in my mouth.
But you just told me that I couldn't speak again, that I had a second turn because I already spoke.
Please, if you would like to speak again for the third time, go right ahead.
This is, this is not, oh my gosh, you know what?
Go ahead and say it.
I am not, I'm just going to talk.
Go ahead.
I am not even going to try to argue with that, that logic.
I think when Miss Pass, Miss Cass passed her turn with, probably she didn't realize that she's giving up a turn. She just passed because she wasn't ready to talk.
Because that was the same thing that Jamie did, she passed her first go-round, too.
Right.
And we all seem to agree with that, except for one person. So, anyway, um, and, and, and this is why, and you're wondering why we're pitting, Gunan, you're right, we're pitting each other against each other, and this is a perfect example. I mean, we are never, the, the whole community, and this is where it's stemming from. And I, I know what I'm going to say is probably going to not sound quite right, but, right from the beginning of planning of all this, by not including the staff and teachers in the decision-making process, by not allowing them to come up with solutions, by dictating, basically, "This is what we want, so how can we make that happen?", instead of going out and really making them involved, and maybe even getting students involved. Right there is when we started pitting people against each other. If you do, you cannot just make decisions for your employees without getting employee, not just getting their buy-in, buy-in is baloney. Buy-in means, "Oh, I made my mind up, I just want you to, I want to manipulate your decision." And that's what we do, a whole lot of. And I've seen a whole lot of manipulating of people's opinions and people's decisions. And that's when the pitting of everybody against each other starts happening. Right from the get-go, it was clear where we wanted to go, and that was what was going to happen. And so, you're going to have that, you're going to have this against them, because it was very clear from the get-go where, where people wanted to go. You know, and if we wanted to, if we actually talked to teachers about some of the things that are really important to them, like, a lot of them are concerned about lunchtime, "How are we going to handle lunch? What's the policy for lunch?" You ask them, "Do you want to come back or not come back?", they're all going to say, "No, because I don't know what it's going to look like, because you have not told me. I don't know what my day's going to look like. I don't understand how to make this all work for myself, and, and make it work for my students. And I'm worried about my students, and I'm worried about myself, and I'm worried about my family." And, you know, getting them an air purifier is not the answer to everything. And, you know, what kind of policies are going to be in place? What are going to, what's going to be the responsibility of, of students of wearing masks? What happens if students don't wear masks? What happens if they refuse to wear masks? What happens if they don't follow policy? There's so many issues that need to be dealt with, that teachers are concerned about, and we haven't even addressed those. So, I'd say no, too, because I don't even know what the, you're asking them to say yes to a very vast unknown. And I think that we, we really missed the boat on getting their, I think you would have gotten a lot more buy-in, so to speak, or a lot more agreement from teachers to go back, if we actually got them involved in the process. So, there, that's where, I mean, we've been, we've, we created that, that us against them feeling, teachers feeling that they're against parents. And the comment, there's one comment that just keeps getting made, and I, I need to comment on this. Students need each other, need, need to be with more of their students, they need to be with their friends. Correct me if I'm wrong, but don't they go to school four days a week? They do go to school, right? I mean, the ones who are in class, they're there, they're meeting their friends, they're seeing their friends, they are going, they do have social interaction. I realize it's not as much as we'd like them to have, but they are getting some social interaction, those who have chosen to, that are doing the hybrid. So, we keep talking as though we're, we're, they're, they're home, they're not seeing anybody. I know we want them to see people more, I want to see more people, I want to go out more, I sit in my house all day with my cat and my dog. I, I would love to spend more time with other people. But if I went to my office, I'd be sitting there by myself, too, because nobody's at work. So, I mean, it's just the way it is. So, I think, I, I just have to question that one. The last thing I'm going to ask is, so I, or I guess I'm going to say, Gunan, you're probably going to get a lot of lunch invitations, because you just-
I'll be happy to, if that's-
So, I, I have a feeling that you're going to have, I, I would think that, I, a lot of teachers would like to invite all of you to lunch. So, since you put yourself out there, I think you, you're going to be getting yourself a lot of invitations to have lunch with little preschoolers without their masks on and all that good stuff. So, um, I, I don't, I've already said my, my piece, so, but I just wanted to, to clarify that whole pitting against each other. I think that we have kind of created the monster that we're dealing with now. And, um, you know, if the decision is what, and you made one of those comments, and I think it was kind of a Freudian slip, Gunan, but you had said, um, hold on, let me get my notes here, sorry, that we are about to do, when you were talking about the plan, because we are about to do it. Because you know that we are going to do this. It's, it's, like I said, a foregone conclusion. I hope it works out. I hope it works out for everyone, I hope the students thrive, I hope the teachers enjoy having students back and feel comfortable in their classrooms. I hope our future me, our future, in our future, we continue to have the amazing teachers we have, and that we don't lose them because of all of this. I hope our students are safe, I hope our community stays safe, I hope all of that happens. I don't wish it on anybody, I want, I want it to work out. I want everything to be good. I just think that waiting and letting this just say, I don't want to say take the loss, but a lot of things happen in fourth quarter, students take tests, we got MAP tests, SOL tests, AP tests, final exams, lots of things going on, a lot of stress factors in students' lives, and we're just going to be adding some more stress by changing things around. But I, I, I wish the best to everybody. I hope it all works out.
Thank you. Since I'm not sure what order we're going in now, is there anybody else who would like to add?
To take their chances.
I just, I just have a statement, basically. From what I can recollect, were, were we not presented a plan from administration that the entire board approved?
For Phase 3, Level 3, yes.
That's, that's what I thought. So, and if Mr. Dr. Meyer doesn't mind me routing a question to him, been getting a lot of how teachers haven't been involved. Can you explain to the board, or to me, actually, as well, to give us some indication, how the teachers have been involved in this plan, and what they've been asking, what their input's been?
Yeah, sure. We, um, well, first of all, we presented, like you said, a plan based on what the school board had approved, which was Phase 3, Level 3. So, we looked at it as, okay, how can we make that happen? So, that was, that was presented to you all. We immediately had a principals' meeting the following day. We instructed the principals to go back and ask teachers that if we were to move to this plan, what, um, you know, to get input from teachers as to, you know, what would make them feel safe, what would we need to do to make them not just feel safe, but to, to be successful academically, and, and how that may look. You know, I know Mr. Pauli and Dr. Wickham, they got pages and pages of questions, and, um, you know, from that. And the teachers gave them the questions, they went through every question, answered every question. Some of those answers ended up in the presentation, some are things that are going to be building-based types of answers. The thought exchange was used as well. For those who answered the question that we asked, we used a lot of information from the thought exchange also to present the plan last week. We had an elementary advisory committee that was made up of parents and, um, teachers and, and- that was made up of parents and teachers and administrators. We had a secondary advisory committee that was made up of parents, teachers, administrators, and students. We have a health and safety committee, and they met as well and also gave input into our plan. And so, what am I missing? What other groups?
Dr. Meyer, what about your live Q and A?
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the, do you have the, yeah, all the lists?
Did you send us an email?
Yeah, I sent us an email to you folks, just all the things we've done. We, let's see, advisories, health and safety committee, all 19 buildings, teachers were met with and asked to submit questions and give information as to how we can make this better. I had open office hours where, basically, through Zoom, I do this every couple of weeks. Any teacher in the division can actually set up a meeting with me and actually have a conversation, so that, that occurred. I did a live Q and A last, I think it was last Wednesday, where a lot of questions were asked, you know, and this live Q and A is through the, for the entire school division, so anyone can ask questions there and provide input. And so there were several different avenues. You know, it was said that, well, the plan was already decided. What was already decided was based on what has been passed by the school board, which is Phase 3, Level 3. So Phase 3, Level 3 is what was recommended to go to. We were already in Phase 3, Level 2. So the question was, if we go to Phase 3, Level 3 as it was approved by the board, then what is that gonna look like? And how can we do that safely? Also, what I sent you as a school board, we went through the entire presentation from last week, or, yeah, last week, okay, time. And we actually highlighted everything in that presentation that came from teachers, correct? If it came from teachers, we highlighted it 'cause teachers had absolutely wonderful ideas as to how to make this work. And so we had tons and tons of feedback from teachers and how we could make this work. And so we took that feedback, it's in the presentation. Feel free to take a look at that presentation. We highlighted it, anything that's in there. You know, 'cause when we started the process, it was basically, okay, the recommendation is to move to here. Can we do it and do it safely? So that's when we, you know, it wasn't, you know, do you wanna go to that level, you know, from the get-go? Because we were at this current level, and, you know, you either go up or back. And so it was the, you know, question of, if we go to this level, what is it gonna look like? And we gave tons of opportunity for input from teachers, and we used it, and it's in the presentation. Feel free to take a look at it. You can see all the great ideas that teachers have given us. Some, some decisions are gonna be made on a building level because buildings are different. Buildings have different populations of students, they have different layouts. And so individual buildings are, are, you know, they're working with, with teachers, you know, as to how that's gonna look in their building. And some buildings are already coming up with plans if this were to be passed. And the teachers are doing a phenomenal job figuring out how they can make this work for their schools. And, you know, the air filtration units, for instance, you know, they're 900 classrooms. We started doing that, we start putting air filtration units in the beginning of school year, it's not something new. It's something that we've been doing all school year, adding them to classrooms and to buildings. And so it's, you know, we didn't mean to insult anyone by having that put in their classroom, but we feel it is an extra level of mitigation that we can provide, whether we move up to this level or not. And so, so, yeah, tons of, tons of teacher feedback. And, you know, and, you know, of course, is there feedback that's not used? Yeah, sure. Okay? Doesn't mean we didn't look at it, that we didn't evaluate it. I mean, you know, and, but there's, there's a lot that was used, okay? And so, you know, we spent hours and hours working with, you know, with Dr. Wickham, Mr. Pauli, Mr. Garrettson, working through their committees to try to get that information. Our principals got it. I don't know, how many questions did y'all, do you think, sent here in this email? Because we sent that to you, so you should've been able to access it.
There were at least 15 per school.
Yeah, so secondary, there's about 15 questions per school that were submitted after faculty meetings to us. Is that about the same for elementary? Okay, and then with those questions, you sent them back to the schools, too? Because some were school-specific, right? Okay. Mr. Garrettson, from your committee?
There was all discussed during the meeting.
There's discussion during the meeting. Of course, y'all have the secondary and elementary as well.
He attended it.
And Mr. Garrettson attended, so, yeah. So, um.
Can I ask a question, Dr. Meyer?
Sure.
How many people are on these committees?
All right, these, all right, so, what, there are about 20 on each committee?
I believe about 20, 20 or 21.
And they're all, and they all show up for every meeting?
Extremely well-attended, yes.
Okay.
It wasn't everybody, but extremely well-attended.
Okay. So there's one, you had one, and Dr. Wickham had one.
Yeah, describe, describe who is on these committees.
No, I don't think we need all those details. I just wanted to kind of know how many.
Okay.
I just wanna make a comment of something you just said. You said, I, I'm not quite sure you understood what you said. You said, you, you went out and you, and you asked for questions. So you basically just went to people, you know, give us your questions, submit questions. And then, "How can we make this work?" If I went to somebody and say, "How can we make this work?", I would pretty much feel like it's a done deal. I've gotta figure out how to make this work now. You're not asking me, "Do I think this can work? Do I think this is something that's going to work for us?" You basically went out and said, "Here's what we're gonna do. How can I make this work? Now, submit me some questions, and then we'll put together 20, 40, 60 people out of 1,000 staff, and those 60 people will figure it all out." What happened to the other 940?
Every school met with every teacher.
Well, you know what? 75% of your teachers feel like they were not represented. And at the end of the day, that's, that's how they feel. And I think that if we want, in order to get people to provide, to work together and to have a, somebody earlier said collaborative environment, you need to create an environment that allows people to feel like their ideas are valued. And that, if they say anything, that they're not going to, there's not gonna be retribution. And that is not the environment we have out there right now. And that is something that really needs to get focused on going forward because we will continue to have these issues unless we learn how to work collaboratively with our teachers, not just drilled down, "Here's some more things. Put it on your plate. Sorry if your plate's crowded. You know, you'll just have to figure out how to make it all fit. Go get yourself a bigger plate."
Okay, let me, let me clarify something, too. The intent was not to say that, hey, this is what we're gonna do. I like to think that we don't start at, no. You know, that we don't start at, okay, you, do you wanna go to Phase 3, Level 3? Well, no. It's not, it wasn't that. It was like, is this possible? Is it possible to do safely? That's the input that I wanted. And if in the end, we already get feedback that we didn't feel that it would be done safely, then we, we could not recommend it. And so, but, there is a, there are charts that you all approved. The next is Phase 3, Level 3. It was an exploration of, can we do Phase 3, Level 3, and do it safely right now? And that was, that was the intent of the message. I'm sorry if that message did not get out there the way it was intended.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry, Dana still has the floor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because she had asked the original question.
So, apparently, there was input. And so, you know, I kind of feel like if I have an employer who's bringing me questions to ask about how I would like things to be, how many people work for employers that, that ask you your input? Or do they just basically tell you this is how things are gonna be?
Yep, and it sucks.
Right, it does. So I think the fact that we're trying to get input from, from everyone, and especially our teachers who are going to have to be dealing with this, because it was worrying me that I kept hearing there was no input. And I was thinking, well, how can, how could we have managed all of these, these ideas and operations without consulting with the teachers? So that was concerning to me. So that's why I wanted to ask you how this input was actually done. So, but, but personally, if it were me, if I had an employer asking me my input for something that they wanted to see if they could do for me and help me do my job and do it safely, I would take that as being very thankful that the employer was thinking of me and wanted my input. That's just, that's just my two cents worth.
Okay, anybody else?
Okay, so, from what I heard Dr. Meyer say and how this all came about, so first, let me say this in response to the metrics or whatever it was that we approved as the different phases. There wasn't a timeline on that saying, "We gotta work through all this before the end of the school year." There was not. So, when I hear the words that you use were, "Our plan", what do you want us to do to make it work, right? It's already our plan. It wasn't the plan that had input from the teachers and staff. It was already our plan because, as you said, the school board voted to move to this phase, so how do we make it work? And then you said, as far as the thought exchange, which is not the first time those comments, this comment has been made, we asked this question, and they didn't answer the question we wanted them to ask, but they gave you a lot of good feedback about how they were feeling, and that was just not what we wanted to hear, so it wasn't valid. That's not the way things are supposed to work because the plan was there. So, tell us what, what you want us to do for us to make our plan work. Our plan, not our plan, our plan as administration. So when you're asking for input, it's better to ask for that input on the front end before you say, "We got a plan. Let's get the input, and then let's say, 'This is the plan.'" And quite frankly, as a board member, that is what I would've liked to have seen come in front of me to say, "To get to Level, Phase 3, Level 3, this is the plan that the input that we've gotten says how we can do it." Not, "This is the phase. This is how it's gonna work. Got any questions?" "Oh, but if you don't answer that question, then we don't want the input." That's how this is coming across. And to say, "We've got to move through these phases", no, that's not, that's not what we, that's not what the plan was, to move through the phases before the end of the year. And as far as being able to communicate with our community, you know, I said it last week. I believe that the information has been biased. It's only the pros and not the cons as to, this is exactly what it's gonna look like. Your child is gonna be in a mask and in a shield pretty much all day long. And this is gonna look like this, and lunch is gonna look like this, and we're still trying to figure that out, right? So for the community to make a really good, informed decision? No, that really did not happen. And we don't have to go from door to door to communicate those types of things to our family. It just takes time, to our families, it takes time to do it and make sure we're doing it the correct way so everyone understands, weigh it. What do you think?
Anyone else have anything before we vote?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on something that Gunan said. Gunan, you've brought up this idea of moving forward a couple times, and I just wanted to comment on that because I don't think, I don't know that necessarily moving forward is necessarily going up in level and phase, right? And from reading, and from reading what the teachers who gave us more detailed feedback said, I think that what's happening in our schools right now is because of this year, because of all the change, students and teachers are finally getting in a groove where they are moving forward right now. And we got multiple reading teachers at the elementary level. And one of the things I've said early on on a compromise, and I've said again as well, you know, maybe we send elementary, you know, full days and not, and not secondary, but one of the things I keep hearing from the elementary teachers, the importance of the routine and how detrimental change is. And, and several of the reading teachers basically begging us, "Don't, like, we're just in a groove where I'm finally, like, teaching these students to read, and I'm making progress. Don't mess it up." And so I do think that we are moving forward. There is a lot of learning going on in our schools right now. And, and, and we have figured out a really tough year, and that's what.
May I just try, what, moving forward? I meant moving forward on that phase-level diagram.
Yeah, yeah.
That was the last call.
Sure.
Not moving forward in the sense that you're talking.
Sure, but, but I guess.
Moving forward on the chart.
Yeah, okay, but I will, I will, I will bounce off of what you just said, though, to say, we can also, nothing says we have to move up or down, obviously. I mean, I think Dr. Meyer just said something about move forward or move back. We can stay at the same level, which is actually the motion that's on the table, right? So we can stay at the same level, and staying at the same level can actually be moving forward better than changing the levels. And I think that's overwhelmingly what the teachers say. And I also wanted to mention one thing that I forgot to say earlier, and that's, and it's appropriate in this discussion, moving forward for spec ed kids, you know? I put a whole thing on, a couple blurbs on that on my Facebook page, but, you know, I have not, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, I've gotten several emails from, and messages from spec ed parents. I don't think I've gotten a single one where they said, "My child, you know, has an IEP or special ed, and could you please vote to go, to go full-time?" I, I think from talking to engaging some of those parents, I think it's gonna be, they view it as being devastating for their, for their kids. So I, again, I think we are moving forward. The other thing, you also said, "We can't stay closed", and it's probably a slip, and I don't, but I do think that this idea of not being full-time in person is somehow, you know, closed or not being at all in person. I mean, I just wanna point out that we are, you know, we're doing a lot, and we are in person. We're not, we're not anywhere near closed, right? But, but you also mentioned a couple times about that, you know, "We're gonna have to do this sooner or later." And, and you're right about that, and I think that is something that, that it would be good for us to start thinking about. I think I started thinking about it last month. That's when I reached out to you, Dana, and we were talking about maybe trying to get to something that was a little more unifying for the community. I think that, you know, for, there was a couple parents that wrote to me that were for the change. I think they knew that I was leaning against it. And they basically asked me, you know, "When would it be okay?", you know? And I threw out some, some health metrics to them, but also said, "And when, you know, and when, when teachers are basically telling us that the change would be worth it?" And I still keep coming back to that, that when you talk about the fall, that's a great time to make that change. And I, and I wanna be clear that I think, I think that come fall, we will be full-time no matter what. I don't think, I don't think the community is gonna be a split. I don't think the board is gonna be a split. We might even get unanimous in the fall on this, right? But what's, what's causing the hardship now is, you know, is the not really being convinced that this is really gonna help and that it might actually hurt. I also, you know, I keep a look at the dashboard, and, you know, we've talked a lot about, we haven't delved into much of the details tonight about health, but, you know, we're basically sitting at around, in the high 50s, close to 60 on a seven-day moving average. And if you look at this chart, we, we are at a level that is higher than we have ever been since those first couple weeks in, in September, when all the students came back. So, it really stretches the imagination to think that now is the time, you know, to, to basically bend the rules, cut corners on mitigate, mitigation, put in extra mitigation so that we can do those things, increase the number of kids. It just, it, it's hard to look at that and justify it. And I think that, you know, you made the point earlier too, Ms. Karan, about, you know, why doubt now? And I, I have to say that you said that we, we were the first to do stuff, we, we did, we did really well, and I agree with that. We've done a lot of things well. We've also taken some risks, and we've done okay with it at some point. But this is also about risk management. We are still in the middle of a pandemic, and this seems to be a really bad time to do this. So, anyway, I, I don't know. I, I think at some point, I mean, I, I've heard my, everyone else, I, I know where we all kind of said, I don't think everybody's very movable on some of this stuff. I am certainly willing to entertain, you know, if, if you're going to vote yes for this motion or a different one, if there's some kind of compromise on timing, or if we don't want to do it unless cer, we meet certain levels or metrics, I'm, I'm happy to discuss that. If we want to, you know, if we want to stay where we are, but increase, you know, give schools a little bit more autonomy to, to do some other things, I think that's something that we can do, even though it's not a level on our chart right now. We've done that in the past to good success, so I'll leave it with that.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything? Ms. Drake, can we have a roll call, please, for the motion? Could you restate the motion again?
I will. I apologize for those of you looking at the screen. I've lost internet access about three times. When that happens, the whole system has to reboot. So, I apologize for those disruptions on the screen. The motion is to stay at the level we are at the present time.
Great. Can you have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Ms. Bond?
No.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
No.
Ms. Parton?
No.
Ms. Graham?
No.
Motion fails.
Is there anyone else who wishes to make a motion regarding Phase 3 Level 3?
Chair Graham, I would like to make the motion that we vote to move to Phase 3 Level 3.
A second.
Any discussion?
I'm not familiar with protocol or as, as much as all the rest of you are, but I would like to consider at least postponing this vote, this decision, at least until we see some numbers come down and maybe pushing the date out a little bit. But I, that would be, I think, maybe a compromise we could all try to live with, but I, you know, there's a motion now to go to Phase 3, but I, I wish we would be able to come up with something that would at least allow people, us, more time to see where the numbers are going, because it's clear that the numbers are still pretty high in our community.
I'll, I'll make a motion to, I'll make, I'll make an amendment. I'm sorry, I made an amendment. Can I make a motion to amend?
You cannot. Only the person who made the motion can amend the motion. Ms. Parton made the motion.
Is that true?
He can make, he can ask for an amendment.
I can ask for amendment. The amendment might fail if we vote on it, but I can ask for it, can I not? Ms. Drake?
Yes.
We typically have friendly amendments. So, give me just one moment. Friendly amendments being, we saw it earlier, right? Do you agree to modify your motion? Those types of things. Give me just one moment. So, we've considered a sub-motion. Give me just one moment, if that's okay, Mr. Tribaka. I just want to get myself ready to add. So, that one's going to show. We'll come back to that one. We'll start that roll call over. I'm just being very clear about what I'm doing. So, Mr. Tribaka is making a motion to amend the motion regarding Phase 3 Level 3, to say, I didn't let you get that far, did I?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I didn't let you get that far.
Yeah, to, to change the date from March 8th to March 25th, which I believe is the beginning of the fourth quarter. Is that correct?
24 or 25?
Yeah.
And to not vote until next week.
I'm sorry?
And not vote till next week, or do we want to?
Well, let's do one motion.
We have to vote tonight, so.
Does anyone want a second?
I'm, I'm sorry, I never heard the, from the staff. Is it 20? Oh, okay, all right. Or, or maybe my motion should be for the first day of the fourth quarter, whatever that is.
March 24th. So, what I have is amend the motion regarding Phase 3 Level 3 to begin March 24th. Ms. Parton never stated a date, so you don't have to rescind the date because she never stated a date.
Oh, okay.
I apologize to get so, so technical.
So, do I need to second what Mark said? Is that how it works?
I, I would like for the staff to double-check that date. I believe it is March 24th.
24th, this is. 25th's the start.
24th is the end of the third. So, we'll make it 25th as the first day of the fourth quarter.
Thank you.
All right. So, we have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
And so, Ms. Graham, I apologize. Am I okay moving forward? I know I'm, I'm taking over some of your role. Is that okay?
No, it's fine. Thank you.
So, at this point, what we'll do as a board is, we will vote on the amendment to the motion.
Okay.
If the amendment passes, we will then vote on the amended motion. If the amendment fails, we will go back to the original motion. So, this amendment is considered separate. So, you are voting if you want to add the amendment to start March 25th. Is everybody clear?
Right. So, it's for discussion on that motion.
On the amendment, right?
On the amendment to the motion, right? Is that, for me, just pushing it further back would just mean less time for folks to make that change and to have it actually mean, be meaningful, as, as meaningful as it could be. It's just pushing it too late, further back into the year.
So, so, if I could comment on that, so that, so the reason, the reason for making that motion is, and I did think about that, however, one of the reasons stated for wanting to do this also in the fourth quarter was to basically check our metrics and help in the fall. This is something that Dr. Meyer has said. And so, that's one concern I have, is that coming in the middle of the second, or, I'm sorry, in the, of the third quarter, not in middle, middle, but I mean, not at the end of the third quarter, it becomes a little bit more difficult, I think, to collect proper data on that. The other concern that.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you very well. Could you say again?
Oh, it's.
What your reason was?
Well, because Dr. Meyer has told us that one of the, one of the positives of doing this is that if we did it, then we can look at, we can compare results and see, basically, like, if it helped academically, for example, right? And I just think that it's easier to collect that data. The data will be more meaningful if we have a cleaner date on, on the quarters, rather than having it come before the third quarter is over.
Thank you.
So, and the second reason is that, you know, a lot of our classes are going to have, you know, midterm testing and other things before the end of the quarter. And I think, given what teachers are telling us about this, the amount of work going in this change, I, I just, I'm, I'm again concerned for, you know, for, for what the classrooms are going to look like, you know, at the last two weeks of the quarter, it just seems like the, the beginning of the last quarter might be a better time to make those drastic changes. So, that's, that's why.
Anyone else?
I'd like to hear thoughts from administration on that.
I, I see pros and cons of both. You know, one, I think one con, and I think Mark has, has given a pro, that, that is, that is good. One con is, we have a lot of students who are struggling now. We're in the middle of a third, of the third quarter. I think if you got them back in with about three weeks left in, or two, three weeks left in the third quarter, they could probably dig themselves out of the holes that they're in right now. You know, the end of the, the actual doing at the quarter, which was a consideration, it's a cleaner type of break. But, you know, clean breaks are definitely important when it comes to semesters, not necessarily when it comes to actual, the other grading periods in between, because most classes are just simply just continuing. But, you know, if, if the goal is to get more face-to-face instructional time, I mean, I, I think the couple of weeks matter and can, and can show a greater difference by the end of the year. Because we do, you know, one thing, too, is you got to think about AP testing, for instance. AP testing comes early. I mean, it's not something that's going to wait to the last week of school. You know, the, the final map testing that shows our, our growth, too, can, you know, i, it's, it's, it's not based on nine-week grading periods, basically. It's just, just sort of overall. But I see pros and cons of both.
I think we talked about the 24, 25th initially, but I think moving to the earlier time was to give time to adjustments so that we will have efficient or full last quarter left, or right? That was, that was the intent to?
Yeah, the last, the last quarter is not really a nine-week period, I don't believe, in terms of weeks. It's a shorter, it's shorter, then you have the testing that's in there as well, you know, SOL testing, and then, of course, AP testing isn't something that we, we have, we're at the mercy of the College Board in terms of that. And so, they're all sort of coming then. The last few weeks, actual instructional time is sometimes limited.
Does anybody else have any other things they want to say?
Oh, yeah. I'll reiterate what Sue said about the health. It slipped my mind, but that, that is one other reason. I mean, our cases are so high right now, and, and I keep hearing from parents who are basically saying, "My kid's going to go out if, if this happens." So, it might cause less switching back and forth, and, and like Sue said, give us a chance to see where the numbers are headed. If they're headed down, which I hope they are by the end of March, then I think everyone can kind of go into this with a little bit more confidence and wider support.
I think the case numbers and the percent positivity is in Foremon County going down. The trend is going down, percent changes according to the COVID data tracker of CDC.
Okay, does anybody else have anything?
Just one more, since I brought up the subject. I, I want to make it clear, this is not what I believe is the best solution. I think the best solution is waiting till fall. But I think it's clear where a lot of people stand on this, and that if I, you know, I, I would rather at least give our students and our teachers an opportunity to prepare themselves for this change, as well as wait out the cases that we've had in a couple of our schools, as well as the cases in our, our community. Even at Virginia Tech, the numbers are going up, and, or they've been relatively high. And so, you know, this is not what I think is the right thing to do. I think, I think the best thing would be for us to wait till the fall, as I've said all along. But clearly, there are four people who don't agree with that, so this was a way of trying to maybe find a solution that is a little bit better.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything else? Ms. Drake, could we have a roll call, please, on the amended motion?
This is for the amendment, right? Not for the motion?
The amended motion.
I'm so sorry, Ms. Graham, I hate to be technical. This is on the amendment only. If the amendment passes or fails, then we will vote on the motion as it stands. So, we are voting only on whether or not you, as a board, will amend the motion regarding Phase 3 Level 3 to start March 25th. We will then vote again on the same motion, either with or without the amendment. Okay?
I'm sorry, could you try that one more time so that we're all? It sounds very complicated.
We're used to friendly amendment, we're used to friendly amendments, right? And so, it moves pretty smoothly. So, with this type of amendment, which is made from someone who is not part of the, of the group that made the original motion, the amendment is separate. So, you will vote on this amendment. Do, do we like it? Do we not like it?
Okay.
And then we will go back to the original motion. Depending on the vote of the amendment, the original motion will either be amended or it will not. And then you will vote again on that original motion, either amended or not amended.
Got it.
Does anybody else? I'm happy to try a, a different explanation if I need to.
I think, anybody have any other questions about it?
All right, sounds good.
Now, you can proceed with roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Bond?
So, since I'm first, I'm just going to make sure I'm voting on the amendment only, what Mark had brought up, to amend the original motion, correct?
Correct. This is adding March 25th to the original motion.
And not to say that I would not have been willing to compromise, but I do agree with Penny. I do think if we're going to do this, we need to get back as, as quick to try to help those students that need help. So, I'm voting no for that.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Ms. Karan?
No.
Ms. Parton?
No.
Ms. Graham?
No.
Motion fails. So, we will now go back to the original motion. Give me just one second. It's going to look a little funky up there. And I'm going to clear the votes. Everybody needs my singing in their lives this evening, right? I'm so sorry about that.
Add a little cheer.
All right. So, Ms. Parton's original motion was to move to Phase 3 Level 3. That motion was seconded by Ms. Bond. There, there was no, there was no date. Everybody's good.
I just assumed the March 8th date that was already in place was what we would go with on that notion.
Effective March 8th. Ms. Bond, are you okay with that amendment?
Dana, she asked if you were okay with the amendment to add the date.
They both said yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm good.
To add March 8th, that's fine, I'm sorry.
These masks.
I was very intent. All right.
You honed in.
Discussion on that?
Yes. Any discussion? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Can we have a roll call, please?
Of course. Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
No.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Ms. Cass?
No.
Ms. Karan?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Our next agenda item is our future board meetings. Board members, the administration would like to start giving the option for our seniors of the month to attend in person. If no one objects, we will start allowing this for our seniors of the month, beginning next week. We will still not leave the dais to shake hands with the seniors of the month, but they will have the option to attend in person. Does anyone have any concerns about that? Is everybody, thumbs up? For all those who are good with that?
I want them here.
Yeah.
Okay, great. The administration also recommends that we delay attendance for our student school board representatives until all board members can be on the dais at the same time. The students would then attend and sit at the tables below the dais to maintain social distancing. Does anyone have any concerns or questions about that? Okay. All right. So, I believe the next item on our agenda is adjournment, Ms. Drake? Did I miss anything? Good.